All right, so good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town Board of the Town of Austin Legislative Session for Tuesday, May 25, 2021. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for Austin Public Librarian and lifelong NAACP member, William T. Brodnax, who passed away last week. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now a moment of silence. Thank you. So William Brodnax, known as Bill, grew up in Georgia during the Jim Crow era and was not welcome in his local library because of his skin color. He later attended Villanova University, where he graduated with a Master's of Science in Library Science. And in 1968, he joined the Austin Public Library, where he became a beloved fixture of our community. Bill was an active member of the NAACP and organized the annual Symphony of Fashions and Luncheon fundraiser for over 20 years. The town recognized Bill on his 50th anniversary of employment with the Austin Public Library just a couple of years ago, and also when he was honored by the Cooperative Scholarship Fund in 2019. Bill was always a welcoming face at the library, and we will miss Bill very much. With that, we'll have the roll call.
Councilmember Feldman.
Present.
Councilmember Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Meyer.
Present.
And Councilmember Wilshire.
Present.
Supervisor Levinberg.
I'm here.
Excellent. Want to go right into the public hearing?
Sure, yes.
But you are reopening this public hearing, correct? It's been several times already.
Correct, yes.
I apologize.
You want me to lead it off? Okay, so tonight, we're reopening the public hearing on Local Law Number Six of 2021, adopting a new chapter, 166, Special Events, Parades, and Public Gatherings of the Town of Austin Code, which would create a special events policy in the town. As we've discussed at past meetings, after the Village of Austin adopted a special events policy earlier this year, they asked that the town look at adopting a similar policy since special events are administered out of our shared recreation department. After a few work sessions, internal review by staff, the version that has been circulated in advance of tonight's meeting is, we hope, our final draft. We do also have resolutions drafted later on in our agenda to adopt the local law and corresponding fees for special events. Before we open it to the public, Council Tom Adana, do you have anything to add?
So this is, yeah, just to confirm, this is a continuation of a public hearing at the board's last legislative session continued to this evening by motion. So tonight, we are considering a few additional changes that were made based upon the work session last week. I'm sure you all recall the discussion of block parties. So where the board landed, I believe, was that block parties are going to be considered special events unless they are on a dead-end street, in which case there will not be a street closing fee. So the only change that had to be made from the last vision version was to remove the reference to a street closing fee. We also changed the penalties for first-time offenses back to be consistent with what the village has. Originally, there had been discussion about modifying that, but I think the board agreed that it made sense to keep it consistent. And hopefully, this is going to be more informational at the outset rather than giving people offense violations immediately. So consistency was important. Those are really the only substantive changes. We also discussed adopting the fees, the board discussed adopting the fees that village has on the books. And so there's, as the supervisor mentioned, there's a separate resolution for that.
Is there anyone here? I was hoping everybody would be muted because there's a lot of background noise when Christie was speaking. So everybody could just consider muting yourselves when you're not speaking and then remembering to unmute yourselves when you do want to speak. So in any case, is there anybody here from the public to address the board as part of the public hearing for Local Law Number Six of 2021, our special events, parades, and public gatherings? We'll give you a couple of seconds or a minute or so to raise your virtual hand if you have anything to say. Do you have some members of our planning board with us this evening, which you'll be hearing about shortly? Anybody from the planning board wanted to comment at this public hearing? You certainly might raise your regular hands because we can see you. Okay, we are seeing not anybody. So with that, I would ask for a motion to close this public hearing.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, fantastic. With that, we're going to move into our special presentation. So tonight, we have a special guest with us, our outgoing Planning Board Chair, Ching Wah Chin. Ching, after nearly 20 years of service to the town, has decided to, yeah, he's reasons, yes, 20 years nearly, has decided to step down from his position as Planning Board Chair. We are super grateful for your service, Ching, and to the town, we wanted to have you at our meeting this evening for a real fancy Zoom standoff. We can all take our, I think Gareth, you have some fancy champagne. We can all cheers our, I have just orange juice and seltzer, but you know, we can cheers tonight. So we're so grateful for your service. We have a proclamation that that we will, we, and we really just wanted to give you a proper send-off for all your many years. So I am going to read this because it does have some nice things to say. Whereas Ching Wah Chin has been a dedicated volunteer for the town of Austin, later closed as member of the Zoning Board of Appeals from 2003 through 2016, when in October 2016, he was appointed as Chair of the Planning Board, temporarily, he thought. And whereas during his time serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning Board, Ching brought his vast legal experience to the table, most recently as Senior Associate Counsel for the Office of Inspector General of the Metropolitan Transportation Authority, and was an incredible asset to both boards. And whereas Chair of the Planning Board, Ching was a calm presence on the board, helping to bridge the delicate balance between the needs of community members and developers, and his level-headed approach kept Planning Board meetings running smoothly and productively for the Austin community. And whereas serving in a volunteer capacity for your community, especially in the role as a member of a land use board, can be challenging, and Ching will now be getting some much deserved Monday and Wednesday evenings off to enjoy with his family. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dana A. Levinberg, Supervisor of the Town of Austin, with the enthusiastic support of the Austin Town Board, thank Ching Wah Chin for his many years of dedicated service to the Town of Austin on both the Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning Board as he resigns his position as Chair of the Planning Board. And that is our proclamation to you. We're going to give you a fancy version of it as soon as we have our fancy folders in, back in stock, which will be hopefully very soon. We're going to get that off to you. And we thank you, Ching, for all of your service to the town. It is so appreciated. And we can, I think, stop sharing that screen now so we can see everybody again. And yay, maybe unmute for the clap. So some thumbs up. So Ching, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Here's your, here's your proclamation. It's not fancy, but we're going to get you.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out it was an honor and a privilege to serve the community. And I wanted to thank my fellow board members for both on the town, the zone, zoning board of appeals and as well as the planning board, and of course, the staff members who provided all the support that was necessary for us to provide our service.
What are you going to do with all this time now? You don't have to read, look at all these plans and read all these proposals and.
I rejoice in the fact that I don't have more paper to recycle.
This is true. But we've been trying to keep you away from paper. Are they still sending you paper for the?
It's hard to look at the big drawings without having the big drawings.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think we're going to be giving John Hamilton a large-screen TV to look at plans on screens instead of a, so we got, we got one for free, so we're sending that on.
Well deserved.
Well, thank you very much, Ching. We really do appreciate all your service. And I know that all of your fellow Planning Board members do as well, as I've heard from them all, how much they appreciated you and your leadership. So thank you very much. And you are being left in, the Planning Board is being left in very capable hands because here tonight also we have Gareth Huffam, who is going to be taking over as Chair. Gareth has been on the Planning Board for many years and is an Austin native with a particular eye for environmental sustainability. Gareth has worked on previous comprehensive plans and is passionate about his community. We are certain he will make an excellent chair. Gareth, did you have anything that you wanted to add about Ching? Because you took the time to come away from your fancy event in wherever you are before you come back up here as your last hurrah. We know you've been participating anyway from, nobody would even know that you weren't here. So did you want to add anything?
Yes, absolutely. I wanted to thank Ching for tremendous leadership and for setting a, an excellent example of how to be very even-handed and how not to take any gumption from, you know, any, anyone who is out of hand, including the board members. And just, you know, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gareth.
And Gareth, thank you so much for those kind words, and thank you for stepping up. We're also going to be.
My pleasure.
And, and I'm almost done with my, my conversation about the Planning Board, so then you can say goodbye, Gareth. We're also going to be appointing Jesus Lopez as a full member of the Planning Board to fill Ching's unexpired term. Jesus has served as an alternate member of the Planning Board for about a year, and he previously served on land use boards in the village, both of them actually, zoning and planning, before moving to the unincorporated town a few years ago. We have quite a dynamic team on the Planning Board right now with everyone bringing to the table a wealth of experience in planning, land use, and environmental sustainability, which seems like quite a wonderful mix. So we're looking forward to our future board. And again, thanks so much, Ching. And with that, we're going to move on to our announcements. Gareth, thanks for joining us, and thanks for stepping up.
Thanks so much.
Have a wonderful night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Ching.
Stay in touch.
Bye, Gareth. Good luck. Best wishes.
Thank you both.
So today marks the one-year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis. Floyd's murder was originally misrepresented by the Minneapolis Police Department, who reported he died of natural causes. But as we all know, the tragedy was recorded and shared online. The murder elevated the national conversation about accountability, public service, racial justice, and systemic inequity. We remember George Floyd and his family today as we continue to pursue justice for all Americans. The Community Equity Task Force will host a press conference this week to discuss the digital divide, which is the gap created by unequal access to the internet and digital services. This is an issue that predates the pandemic but became a focus across the nation as we switched to working remotely. State Senator Shelley Mayer will attend to speak about her proposed e-learn legislation to expand internet access during the term of pandemic. The task force has also invited a number of elected officials and community members, including students, to discuss the impacts of the digital divide on Austin and other efforts needed to close it. The press conference begins at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday at Lewis Angle Waterfront Park. We hope you can join us. Vaccines are available at quite a few sites in town. The Austin Volunteer Ambulance Corps will hold a pop-up vaccine clinic tomorrow and Thursday at Ovac Headquarters at 8. Clinton Avenue. This is the perfect site for anyone feeling hesitant about the vaccine. Ovac has Pfizer and Moderna shots available, and you can schedule an appointment time through their Facebook page or by calling 914-941-9196. They are also willing to come to you if that means getting you vaccinated. So just let them know, give a call. Darren released some exciting news today that clinical trials in the 12- to 17-year-old age group have revealed promising results of strong immunity, and they will be pursuing FDA emergency use authorization in the coming weeks. May is National Small Business Month. We heard a lot about supporting small businesses in the fall after Thanksgiving, but it's important to incorporate shopping locally into your daily routine. Our businesses have a lot to offer, especially as the summer season rolls around. Yesterday, on our social media pages, we shared a fun bingo board with easy ways to support small businesses. I encourage you to check it out and participate. And remember, while we have some great restaurants in town, which we often talk a lot about, there are also a lot of excellent services provided locally. Keep them in mind as you buy goodies for Memorial Day and give your favorite business a shout-out online, leaving them a positive review, and shop local. Town offices will be closed Monday in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. Garbage collection scheduled for Monday will shift to Tuesday, and regular Tuesday collection will shift to Wednesday. If you're not already signed up for the Recycle Rate app, you should so you can keep track of all these changes. And that's if you live in the unincorporated town. May 31st is also the official beginning of the seasonal leaf blower restrictions in the town, and I believe in the village, although I'm not sure what their dates are. Gas-powered leaf blowers can only operate at half-speed on impervious surfaces or in cemeteries. Other than under these specific circumstances, gas-powered leaf blowers cannot be used in the town until September 30th. There will not be a Memorial Day parade this year in Austin or in Briar Cliff. The Austin Centralized Committee of Organized War Veterans will hold a ceremony at Nelson Park on Memorial Day starting at 10:45 a.m. The Briar Cliff Manor American Legion Post 1054 will hold a ceremony at Law Park at 11:30 a.m. So we're going to split ourselves in two and somehow manage to get to both. I hope to see many of you at these events as we remember those in our community who gave their lives in service to our country and to protect our freedoms. Memorial Day is the unofficial start of the summer, and I know a lot of people have summer events on mind like Independence Day, fireworks, and our annual summer concert series, all of those things which we had to skip in person last year due to the pandemic. This year, we are happy to announce that we will be hosting our annual summer concert series and Food Truck Fridays starting Friday, July 2nd. However, due to the large crowds, usually between 4,000 and 6,000 people we get for our Independence Day fireworks display, we opted not to host those in July this year. While we're making great progress on the COVID-19 front, given the nature of the event and the number of people, including many, many children who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated, we thought it would be much more responsible to wait a little bit longer for a more festive celebration and have therefore scheduled the fireworks celebration for instead the end of summer, Friday of Labor Day weekend, which is September 3rd, with the main date of September 10th. We hope by then, more people will be vaccinated, and COVID-19 numbers will be much reduced. Please stay tuned, more details will be coming. In the meantime, please mark your calendars for our Friday night events. These weekly concerts bring out a much smaller crowd than the fireworks, and we hope they will be a welcome respite for the community as we start to return to some sort of normalcy. We are also working again with the Greater Austin Chamber of Commerce and Sing Sing Kill Brewery to feature local restaurants and New York craft beverage purveyors to help support our local businesses. And we're grateful for the help the Riscos provided in curating our bands for the concerts as well as helping get the word out. We will be sharing more information very soon via social media, so get your lawn chairs ready. Last weekend, I had an opportunity to watch some of the new original young voices in theater coming out of Westchester Collaborative Theater. If you haven't had an opportunity to watch these Gen Z out-loud performances yet, waste no time and sign up for their next Zoom performance. Go to wctheater.org. We have incredible talent right here. I also had a chance to witness from afar the Austin Boat and Canoe Club Annual Commissioning Ceremony as I came in from a morning paddle up the Hudson on Sunday. This year, it was only open to members due to COVID. We wish all our boaters, paddlers, and the like a safe and enjoyable boating season. Look out for new signage about our Austin Boat launch coming from our clerk and our recreation department very, very soon. That's it for me. Do my board colleagues have anything to add to the announcements this evening?
I just have one thing to add. There is a new rent assistance program through the Office of Temporary Disability. The applications will be open June 1st. For more information, you can go to otda.ny.gov/programs. And that's for rent assistance as well as utility assistance.
Fantastic. And maybe you can just send that to me because I don't think that we've seen that yet, and I'll share it out in the update this Friday as well.
Will do.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Shaw, anybody else? Okay, well, hearing none, are there any liaison reports? And hearing none of those, I will ask if there's public comment on agenda items only. Anything on the agenda that you want to comment on? We have two people in our audience. In our audience, on our audience, I don't know. Are you on or you in Zoom? And we'll wait for any hands to go up if there's any comments on any of our agenda items only at this point. We'll have a chance for regular comments later. All right, without seeing any hands up, we're going to go over to our board resolutions. And we have our clerk with us this evening, so thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Number, Approval of Minutes, regular meeting, May 11, 2021. Resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Austin hereby approves May 11, 2021 minutes of the regular meeting as presented. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Approval of the Voucher Detail Report. Resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Austin hereby approves the voucher detail report dated May 25, 2021 for the amount of $1,499,766.22. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
So our voucher detail report is kind of high this week, but we've had a lot of low ones up until now. And this is, the reason is because we have our May IMA payments to the village, and this time that includes four months of police IMA payments. Each year, the village holds off on billing the police IMA until May, when the town has more cash on hand following the town-county tax collection in April. So we will likely not see a check run this high again until May of next year. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I thought there was a child who was commenting from. Maybe it's Katie, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Thank you.
Establishing a Tree Bank Special Purpose Fund. Whereas, on September 10, 2019 meeting, the Town Board adopted a resolution establishing a Tree Bank Fund for payments made by site plan and subdivision applicants for the mitigation of tree removal pursuant with Town Code 183-12G. And therefore be it resolved that the Tree Bank Fund established by the Town Board shall be the Tree Bank Special Purpose Fund.
Have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
So the Town Board established our Tree Bank Fund, which is paid into by developers who are unable to satisfy their replanting requirements on their own property for the town to use for tree planting elsewhere in the community in 2019. Our auditors recommended that the board adopt a resolution to establish the Special Purpose Fund account for these payments to be deposited into. So thank you to our comptroller, Dale Brennan, for helping us keep everything organized and in good shape for our audit and responsible to our audit. Any discussion, questions?
I'm super excited to see us doing this. I think it's a great thing to have the people who take down, the developers have pay into this bank so we can maintain and preserve our own trees elsewhere in the town. So I think it's, this law, I'm a huge fan of it, big win.
Absolutely. And I actually do believe that the Tree Bank itself was set up under Supervisor Suzanne Donnelly. And then the fees themselves were what we put into place some, some years later. So we thank you for that. Since you're on tonight, we get to acknowledge you for that. So thank you. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Okay, Acceptance of a Tree Bank Special Purpose Fund Payment from the SPCA. Whereas, the SPCA obtained a site plan, excuse me, a site plan approval from the Planning Board. And whereas, in connection with said approval, the SPCA was required to make a payment to the town's Tree Bank Fund for mitigation of tree removal in accordance to Town Code 183-12. And now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board accepts the SPCA's payment to the Tree Bank Special Purpose Fund in the amount of $10,642.50. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
So obviously, we're accepting this payment in, into the now-set-up Tree Bank Fund from the SPCA for mitigating tree removals approved in their site plan for their headquarters renovation, which we're super excited about as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you.
Resolution, Local Law Number Six for 2021, Special Event Permit Local Law. Whereas, the special events are largely beneficial to the community. However, special events which are likely to attract large numbers of people can adversely affect the well-being of the town residents and business owners and strain municipal resources. And whereas, pursuant with the intermunicipal agreement with the town, the Town of Austin utilizes the service of the Village of Austin's Recreation and Parks Department. And whereas, the town was informed that the Village Board of Trustees adopted a local law establishing certain procedures and standards for permitting special events in the village. And whereas, in the interest of consistency between the town and village residents, the, and events, and the administration of such events by the Village Recreation and Parks Department, and in order to provide the well-being of the community, the Town Board considered adopting a local law establishing procedures, whereas the town can be informed in advance of special events and be assured that such special events will be accommodated without unduly burdening the community or the municipal resources. And whereas, the local law was based upon a local law adopted by the Village Board of Trustees, which the board, Town Board modified and tailored to fit the needs of town residents, property, and resources. And whereas, in consideration with the proposed local law, the tree, the Town Board openly and dutifully noticed the public hearing and its regular meetings on Tuesday, April 27, 2021, which the public hearing was duly continued by, at the Town Board meeting, regular meeting on Tuesday, May 11, 2021, and Tuesday, May 25, 2021, via video conferencing. In accordance with the Governor's executive orders 2.202.1 and 2.02.15, and subsequently intended, extended, and the members of the public hearing, having the opportunity to, excuse me, having the opportunity to attend and be heard, the public hearing was closed on May 25, 2021. And whereas, and whereas, the local law has been on the desks of the members of the Town Board for at least seven days exclusive of Sunday prior to the adoption of the resolution. And now therefore be it resolved, the Town Board hereby adopts the negative declaration pursuant with the State Environmental Quality Review Act determining an action that does not have the potential to have any significant adverse environmental impacts as the local law would regulate special events within the town and, and on town property to ensure that they were held in a safe and orderly manner and that they do not unduly burden the town resources or residents. And be it further resolved, the Town Board, after due deliberations, finds that the, for furtherance of the safety, health, and well-being of the persons and property in the town, it is in the best interest of the town to adopt such a local law. And the Town Board hereby adopts Local Law Number Six of 2021, entitled, "Adopting a New Chapter, Chapter 166, Special Events, Parades, and Public Gatherings of the Town of Austin." And be it further resolved that the Town Clerk is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and into the local law book of the Town of Austin to publish said minutes in the newspaper, published in the town, if any, or in the newspaper published in the county or in the newspaper published in the county in which such town may be located. Having a circulation in such town and affidavits of such publications shall be filed with the Town Clerk and a file of the copy of said local law will be sent to the Secretary of the State of New York. Do I have a resolution? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. This is a roll call vote, correct? Local law?
Is it, Kristi?
Yes.
Okay, let's do the roll call. Councilman, Councilmember Feldman.
Aye.
Councilman Rashua.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyer.
Aye.
Councilman Wilshire.
Aye.
And Supervisor Levinberg.
Aye. And actually, I was going to just mention that, as discussed earlier, this resolution adopting the local law to establish special events policy in the town mirrors the village's policy, and I want to just, big shout-out to Council Kristi Adana, Insurance Representative Jim Duffy, Recreation Superintendent Bill Garrison, and also Budget Director Cory Caffarelli for their help developing this local law, and to Jamie Hoffman in the Village Manager's Office, because she did a lot of the background research to develop the village's law over the past year, and none of us would be here without her. So we're very grateful for all the hard work that went into that. Next up, we have the fees.
Resolution, Establishing Fees for Chapter 166 of the Town Code, Special Events, Parades, and Public Gatherings. Whereas the Town Board adopted Local Law Number 6 of 2021, adopting the new Chapter 166, Special Events, Parades, and Public Gatherings of the Town of Austin Code, establishing certain procedures and standards for permitting special events in the town. And whereas the local law was based upon a local law adopted by the Village of Austin Board of Trustees earlier this year, in which the Town Board modified and tailored to fit the needs of the town residents, property, and resources. And whereas, as both the Village of Austin and the Town of Austin's special event permit applications will be administered by the Village of Austin Recreation and Parks Department, which also serves the Town of Austin pursuant with an intermunicipal agreement, the Town Board finds it is in interest to orderly administration and to avoid confusion between events occurring in the town and the village, the fees associated with the event permit application should be the same in both municipalities. And whereas the Town Board finds the fees adopted by the Village Board to be reasonable and fair, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board hereby amends the Town of Austin 2021 fee schedule to establish the following fees related to special events permitting law, Town Code Chapter 166. Special event permitting fee is $25 of a non-refundable fee. Approved special event fee, Level 1, less than 300 people would be $200 an event. Level 2, 300 to 499 people in attendance, $500 an event. And Level 3, more than 500 people in events would be $700 per event. Security deposit approved for the special event unless otherwise specified in the permit. Level 1, less than 300 people in attendance would be $200 per event. Level 2, between 300 and 499 people in attendance would be $500 per event. Level 3, more than 500 people in attendance would be $700 per event. Banner application fee. For events in the Town of Austin, including the Village of Austin and portions of the Village of Briar Cliff Manor located in the Town of Austin, would be $25 non-refundable fee. For events outside of the Town of Austin, it would be $50 non-refundable fee. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
So this resolution establishes the fees for the new special events legislation, essentially the same as the village's, Village of Austin's, except we removed the street closing and closing of metered parking spot fee, because that does not apply to the town. Hopefully, this consistency will help members of the public and our shared town-village employees in easily implementing this new policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to do a roll call for this? No, okay. And is there anybody opposed? Thanks.
Resignation, Town Planning Board Chair. Resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Austin accepts the registration with regret of Chang Wah Chin from his position as Chair of the Town of Austin Planning Board effective May 31st, 2001. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
So thank you again, Ching, for your many years of service to the town. I hope you enjoy your Wednesdays off from planning board meetings now and well into the future. All those in favor?
Aye.
Too much, too much, too much. Appointment, Town Planning Board Chair. Resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Austin appoints Gareth Hoffam as Chair of the Town of Austin Planning Board effective June 1, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Congratulations, Gareth, on your new position. We're continually impressed with your expertise and passion for planning and environmental issues and help that you've given us with some grant applications, and we're glad you will be taking on the reins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Appointment, Town Planning Board. Resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Austin appoints Haze Lopez to fill the unexpired term of the Town of Austin Planning Board effective June 1, 2021, to expire on December 31st, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So.
Second.
Congratulations, Jesus. Thank you for serving as alternate for this past year and agreeing to participate as a full member now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Just want to point out that if I mispronounce someone's name, I apologize in advance. Position, Appointment, Town of Austin Justice Court. Resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Austin promotes Catherine Quizip?
Quip.
To a temporary probation position as intermediate clerk for the Town of Austin Justice Court effective May 25th, 2021. And be it further resolved that Ms. Quipip's annual salary will remain at $46,998 for 2021. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
So Catherine started working for the Town Court in December, waiting for the opportunity to take the civil service test and hopefully to become a probationary employee of the town. We are so happy to hear that Catherine had passed the civil service exam and was reachable on the resident list. Catherine has been a great added value to the court team, and we're excited to be keeping her on, so congratulations to Catherine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Appointment, Seasonal Parks Groundkeeper. Resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Austin appoints Brian Sanchez. Thank you. Sanchez, Austin, as a seasonal position as Parks Groundkeeper at an hourly rate of $15 an hour effective June 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
So as the weather gets warmer, our parks and cemetery crew is in need of some extra hands. We're happy to be appointing two young men to be joining the crew on a seasonal basis this summer. Brian Sanchez-Jinin and in the next resolution, Ernest Salash. Brian and Ernest are Austin residents, both with an excellent skill set to be helpful additions to the crew for the summer. Welcome, Brian and Ernest. All those, oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Appointment, Seasonal Parks Groundkeeper. Resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Austin appoints Ernest Sanchez.
Salash, okay.
Austin, for a seasonal position of Parks Groundkeeper at an hourly rate of $15 per hour effective June 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? So you got Gareth Hoffam right. If you can get Gareth Hoffam, you can get any pronouncing.
Once I say a name a thousand times, I am perfect. And Jesus Lopez, too, so. Yeah. Gareth and I go back many, many years, so.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. Okay.
Well, as long as people understand.
Yes.
Contract, State Transportation Services, 2021 to 2022. Whereas, as of September... Hold on. Get to my page five. Resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Austin authorizes Supervisor to sign an agreement with Westchester County Department of Senior Programs and Services for the purposes of receiving funding not to exceed $3,234 for program year April 1, 2021 through March 31st, 2022, for the town providing transportation services to seniors in accordance with the New York State Transportation Program. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay.
So the town senior nutrition program receives grant funding from the state for a new, for a few different programs, and the funding is administered through the Westchester County Department of Senior Programs and Services. This contract will allow us to get our grant funding to support our transportation program for seniors, much-needed programming for our community seniors. So we're very appreciative of that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? And I just saw a draft of a new little guide for our seniors that our clerk, Sue Domily, is developing to help the seniors understand their rights with the taxi voucher program, making it easier and color-coded for them and so that they will know that they can't be overcharged, and they will know which color takes them to which part of Austin and/or helps for shop, right? So very excited to see that, and thank you so much for coming up with something that looks very simple and easy to understand for our seniors.
You're welcome. It's, we took over, the clerks department took over the taxi program this year, so it's just a natural next step to really help you with it, to help you with the contract.
And super drafty draft, so the Town Board will see it soon. I just wanted to mention it.
Oh, yeah, it's very, it was very basic.
You'll all see it soon. We just saw it very, very lately, today, so thank you for that. Okay, so do we vote on this? All those in favor, did we vote on that? Yes, we did. Okay, so next up, we have visitor recognition on anything whatsoever. So hello, visitors. Is there anything anybody would like to ask or discuss or tell us? Now's your moment. You may raise your virtual hand, as again, I know the three people I see in attendance shouldn't be well versed in that hand-raising technique. So. Do, 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 do. Gary Cahill, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I'll also give a shout-out to Stephen Dewey, who is our town prosecutor, and Acacia Moreyello, who is a town resident extraordinaire, village resident extraordinaire, town and village. She comes to all the meetings. Thank you, Acacia. I hope your kids are learning about local government as you attend all these Zoom meetings. Okay, so hearing, seeing nobody has anything to say, again, thank you so much for everybody for attending, and I'd like a motion to adjourn to executive session for advice of counsel.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. I hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable, long Memorial Day weekend. Hopefully, we'll see you at some of the events on Monday. Please join us next week for our Town Board group session on Tuesday, June 1st, at 7:30 p.m. via Zoom. Have a wonderful night.